I now call the Netroona County Board of County Commissioners regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021 to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio.
Here. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The Chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion or questions on any item? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I now declare the public hearing open for Resolution 11, for consideration of Resolution 11-21, transfer of funds. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Netroona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address. Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I ask for your approval of Resolution 11-21. This resolution reflects a transfer of $149,392.18 from unanticipated revenue to all the abundance of salary and burden account lines that you see listed on the resolution. What this does is transfer monies back into these accounts for the county bonus that was given to the employees in December. So this just replenishes those funds to get them back where they need to be. Entertaining any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Good? There being none. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in op, excuse me, in favor of the transfer of funds to approach the lecture. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? There being no one to speak in favor, I would now ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of the transfer of funds to approach the lecture. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against, I now declare the transfer of funds public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 11-21.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner North, seconded by Vice Chair Kaufman. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess we're going to adjourn now. Just kidding. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of PS 20-1, approval of the final plat of seven lots to be known as Mountain Acres. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Netroona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address. Ms. Chavis, may I have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is an application for a major subdivision by Camille Lehman. The proposed subdivision is located on Casper Mountain between Archery Range and K-2 Road. The subject parcel and all surrounding parcels are zone mountain residential, too. This is a vicinity map. The parcel in the subject is highlighted in purple, and to the left side of that map, you'll see Archery Range Road, and to the right is K-2 Road. This is an aerial of that same lot highlighted in purple, and I have added the parcel lines so that you can view it with that aerial. And this is looking west. Another picture west. And then a northeast picture. So the subdivision regulations have plat content requirements, and the subdivision was prepared by a professional licensed land surveyor and contains the required bearings and distances, road designation with bearings and dimensions, does not contain non-contiguous parcels. Total acreage and lots are shown with the water and sewer labels that have also been shown, and so all the required plaque contents are on the plat that was submitted in your With the subdivision regulations, there's general design criteria. Each lot has to have legal access. This lot, each of the seven lots has legal access through the proposed Thetford Road. The lot size and width are appropriate for residential use and provide for off-street parking and services, and there are no corner lots, double frontage lots, flag lots, or wedge-shaped lots with less than 30-foot width. And those are from the design criteria that are in the subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulations also have road standards. Local roads shall be laid out to discourage excessive through traffic. This is a cul-de-sac road. No more than four lots shall front the cul-de-sac, and in this subdivision, there's only two lots fronting that subdivision, so it meets that criteria. No more than two roads shall intersect at one point, and this road intersection is Thetford and K-2 Road, so there's only two roads that intersect. The applicant will provide a road sign if approved, so it would identify the new subdivision road. And dead-end roads shall be provided with turnaround of sufficient width for emergency vehicles. The cul-de-sac meets the minimum criteria for a cul-de-sac. The minimum exterior radii is 45, and the applicant is providing 50. The subdivision also, the regulations also lay out standards for mountain roads. The road easement is 50 feet with a minimum travel width of 20 feet. Turnarounds can be provided on areas where the segment is 150 feet in length. The new road will have timber removed and a 14-foot clearance. And again, the cul-de-sac does have a 50-foot exterior radii. Going back to just our general criteria for approval of subdivisions, is the subdivision consistent with the development plan? The proposed subdivision is under the guidance of the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. The density for residential development is one unit per five acres. The proposed finding of fact, the lots will be low-density residential, providing one unit per five acres, and the lots will be developed in the same manner as the surrounding lots. There's no difference in between this lot and the adjacent lot as far as what it allows for permitted uses. Is the subdivision in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards? Proposed finding of fact, the subdivision has been processed in accordance with the applicable general provisions and subdivision design standards of the 2013 Netroona County Subdivision Regulations. Those first few slides that showed the roads and then the general design, that's where that comes from. Has the applicant provided evidence that a sufficient water supply system and sewer disposal system will comply with state and local laws and regulations? The proposed finding of fact, the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality has provided a non-adverse recommendation for the subdivision. They did note that there is restriction because of the bedrock. Lot owners will need to contact the Wyoming Licensed Professional Engineer to design the septic system serving any homes constructed on the lot. The three wells within the subdivision meet all DEQ Class 1 and II standards for groundwater, and DEQ has also approved that water study. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county? Proposed finding of fact, the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, as the uses will be low-density residential and compatible with surrounding, with the surrounding area. So just to go over this again, the overview, the subdivision has received a non-adverse recommendation from DEQ. The information did address the safety and adequacy of the water, and then also the sewage system. The lots are at or above the minimum lot size for the zoning district. The proposed use complies with the zoning resolution and the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan recommendations. The proposed road meets the road criteria, both internal and external, the 50-foot right-of-way with a 20-foot travelway while maintaining adequate width for emergency vehicles. The road will also maintain the unobstructed height clearance of 14 feet, and then again, that turnaround is above the minimum at 50 feet. The applicant will form an improvement and service district if the subdivision is approved with that condition, or an HOA if the ISD is not required. As of tonight's meeting, we've had several written comments received from three property owners in opposition. At the planning commission meeting, there were two who spoke in favor and four that spoke in opposition. The Casper Mountain Fire District has also commented on this plat, and those comments were in your packet. Notifications were sent to the property owners within a quarter mile, and that was about 27 property owners. At the March 9, 2021, meeting, the planning commission did recommend approval of this subdivision, subject to five conditions. The first four conditions have been completed, and those were adding Jackson Canyon Road to the plat as shown, and then the three well locations were also added to the plat. The note from DEQ was also added to the plat in regards to that septic design and the requirement of the professional licensed engineer. The Casper Mountain Fire Protection District did provide comments, so the fifth one that's still outstanding is that improvement and service district. Those do take some time to form, so that one will be a little later down the road if it's approved. And then I have just a snip of that subdivision, if need be. So that is the staff report, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, questions for Ms. Chavis?
Great.
Done? Okay, I guess you're getting off easy.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
Trish, I'm looking, but I guess I can't find it or whatever. You said the county, or Mountain Fire commented. I'm not finding that in the packet.
There were. Oh.
Because it went, you had it came out from, so I didn't turn everything off. Thank you.
Ms. Chavis, I had just one quick question. I've been looking at the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, the document you kind of laid out for us. On item eight, it says new subdivision roads will be dedicated for public access. As it's noted, the subdivision does provide a private road. How is, is the ISD part of it? Or, to me, it kind of seems that this is not consistent with the land use guidance document.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, the 2004 Mountain Land Use Plan is, is a guiding document. It's not a regulation. So in this instance, the, the road is private, and the applicant, again, his, his main concern is road maintenance, whether it's through an ISD or an HOA. The applicant would like to have both winter and summer access, and so through, through the private road would allow him to do that. He does meet the requirements that are in the 2004 Casper Mountain, excuse me, the Mountain Land Use Plan, the one through seven are fully compliant, but the number eight is dedicated to public.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Or to private, I'm sorry.
Chairman Milne. Chairman Milne. Commissioner Milne.
Hey! Moving on up. Trish, looking at the Casper Mountain Fire District letter that we received from Chief Evers, it looks like she does have a couple of concerns about this and hasn't had a whole lot of time to actually look at the, look at the plat and look at, look at everything in general. Have you seen the, the letter she sent today?
Yes.
Looking at the, at her concerns, like the first one, excuse me, least one, public access, Chapter 1, Section 9, Page 5 of the subdivision regulations. The plat does not show a secondary legal access. Was she looking, is, was she looking at a different plat, or?
No.
Is there one that shows those?
The plat does have one public, or I keep saying public, I apologize, private road, and then a second access has been discussed with the applicant, and I think he can answer that when he comes up to speak. There is discussion about adding that second road.
Okay. And then, looks like there's a couple other concerns. But it doesn't look, according to Chief Evers, they, to her knowledge, Casper Mountain Fire wasn't notified about the subdivision, so they kind of, looks like they're kind of requesting more time to give a real answer as far as whether they have concerns or not. At least kind of my interpretation of the letter.
There, when, when looking at this letter, there are certain items that are listed that are requirements when, when we look at Chapter 7, Section 6, Page 30, which lines the mountain roads. The subdivision does meet those requirements. Let me, so they are right here. So for roadways in mountainous areas, right-of-way may be reduced to 50 feet. The, the plat does show a 50-foot wide road right-of-way. The width, again, is, is 50 feet, and then the travelways would be 20 feet. The road height, which is not put on the plat as far as unobstructive height, is, is 14 feet. So in regards to, to some of these things, they can't be put on a plat, I guess, and so I don't know how else to show, you know, that unobstructed height, other than just relaying verbally that that's, that's the way it is.
Okay.
Unless it's added as a condition that it will remain, you know, unobstructed height, the 14-feet clearance, I don't know how else to.
That's fine.
Fix that.
Thank you.
County Attorney Nelson, would you give us a little background on some of where we're actually at? I think there's some, some concerns out there that really aren't addressable by the plat issue, but if you would go ahead, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So just to add a little bit more depth to this explanation, so I candidly had not seen prior to just now the, the letter from Casper Mountain Fire, and I think initially, input was requested from the Netroona County Fire, and they had no input, and I think it only makes sense, obviously, to get that information to the Casper Mountain Fire District, as they're most familiar with, with the mountain. And so as, as I skimmed very quickly the letter from the Assistant Fire Chief, it did seem that she raised more questions than she had answers for. The one thing that jumped out in that letter and has been a recurrent theme regarding this application is the status of Jackson Canyon Road and a potential vacation of that roadway. By way of background, we've, we've had discussions internally. It's my understanding that there is evidence that it is a dedicated county road, and in some informal discussions previously, there, there were some discussions about whether or not, if, if approved, this subdivision were approved, if that would remain a necessity. But I think what's somehow been miscommunicated is that what you are being asked to decide tonight with regard to the subdivision would somehow have an effect on the status of, of that road as, as a dedicated public roadway, and it would not. Wyoming statutes and Wyoming Supreme Court case law is very clear that the only way to vacate, alter, establish, or otherwise amend any dedicated public roadway is through the statutory procedure contained within Title 24 of Wyoming statutes, and that is not why we are here today. So regardless of the outcome of, of this application, whether, under the resolution, the, the commission will have multiple options to approve, as recommended, as presented, as this commission sees fit, to, it could deny it, it could table it to a date specific. Whatever the outcome is, the, the status of that roadway will not be changed. It is what it is, and should the county or any other interested stakeholder wish to petition to change that, that would be a separate proceeding, which would be preceded by public notice and an opportunity for public hearing. So I, I think there have been some concerns, and I, and understand that, but, but that is not before the commission here today. I think what, what is before the commission is the application for this major subdivision, which Ms. Chavis has presented a staff report on, and will, I'm sure, hear more from the applicant and other, other interested parties, but I did want to make that statement as part of the record to hopefully shed a little bit light, of light on what we're here to, to do this evening and hopefully clear up any misconceptions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? All right. There being none, I would ask if the applicant would like to come forward and, and give an overview of their proposed subdivision. Good evening, sir. If we'd have your name and address for the record?
My name is Camille Lehman. My address is 3231 Micro Road. Dear County Commissioners, members of publics and neighbors, again, my name is Camille Lehman. My Casper Mountain home has been my primary residence for almost 17 years. I'm the owner and the author of Mountain Acres subdivision. I have spent a lot of time on this project. I have made sure that this development is environmentally sound, community-friendly, and legally above reproach. I have been surprised and quite disappointed to see objections of this development. In my opinion, it's reaching somewhat extreme proportions. I can understand some concerns of less informed members of the public, although it seems to me that several of these objections may have more personal content. However, legitimate or not, I will let the expert address the concern and question regardless of their nature. I assure you that I have never been intentionally damaged or endangered integrity of the Casper Mountain or my neighbors. It has never been my intent to block emergency access through my property. Instead, I have been actively seeking ways to implement the needs of emergency personnel. When it's time to construct the roads, I will invite the chief, chief of the fire department to review the plans for the roads to ensure they are in compliance with the laws for subdivision. In conclusion, I want to assure the Netroona County Commissioners that Mountain Acres subdivision will be developed with my deepest dedication to this community, to my neighborhood, and the clean environment of the Casper Mountain. I will do my best to preserve the nature and quality of life while protecting my private property. You don't have to take just my word for it. Please listen carefully to the testimony of experts, so there is no doubt about the nature of this project in the future. Thank you for attention.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lehman? Commissioner Hendry?
Yeah, thanks for coming. The question came up about the Jackson Canyon Road, and now that road winds through Lot 5 and Lot 4 and Lot 3, just about through the middle of it. Would you change that road any? Would you offer to do that so that it goes up your road and then down through a lot line so that it does establish that road all the way through? Is that a possibility? Have you thought about that?
It's a possibility, and again, when the snow melts off, I want to meet with the fire department and show them exactly where the roads are, and I want to make sure there is a good fire department and emergency vehicle access.
Commissioner Milne?
Thanks for coming in. Two questions. The road that you're putting in, proposed road that you're putting in for your subdivision, would you have that dedicated to the public?
I'm sorry, I have a hard problem.
No, it's fine, sorry. The, the proposed road that you're going to put in, per the plan and whatnot, is supposed to be dedicated to public. Was that your plan, or are you looking at?
I, my plan is to have more like cul-de-sac. I want people who will own that property kind of enjoy a little bit more privacy than have a, through traffic, through, I don't think it's necessary.
And then the other one, other question I had was, did you, were you aware of the two-access points requirement for the, for roads?
Oh, I think I'm going to have my attorney to answer that because she was kind of studying upon it a little bit more.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner North?
Right now, that road has been used in the winter months by snowmobile use in that area around Archery Range Road and some of the other areas, and I'm just wondering how you feel about that, that type of use in that area?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding that question. What road are you talking about?
Well.
There is, there is, there is Archery Range Road, and a, a snowmobile trailer is kind of besides of my, alongside of my property.
Okay, all right.
So that's, that's where the trail is right now. It doesn't, it doesn't go through my property.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of PS 20-1 to
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and staff. My name is Heather Duncan Malone. I'm the attorney for Mr. Lehman. I'm at 139 West Second Street, Suite 1C. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of this subdivision. I appreciate Trish and Eric's reports to you this evening. I would like to ask the Commissioners if I could reserve some extra time at the end of this to, to, before you close the public hearing, to address any comments and objection to the subdivision. I, I think, you know, no more than 10 minutes would be needed, most likely.
We'll, we'll see what comes up.
Okay.
I won't make any promises at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm aware from the hearing before, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and through social media posts and emails that you've received and that I have seen, that there are a lot of concerns about this proposed subdivision, that there's been a lot of discussion. And I'm here to tell you this evening that a lot of what we're hearing and what's being put out. put out there just simply isn't true. Approval of this subdivision will not vacate any road, as Mr. Nelson pointed out. The process to vacate or alter a road is set out by statute. It's a separate process, it's a lengthy process, and by no means will approval of this subdivision do that. So I don't think there's any need to hash out what a possible vacation of any road might lead to, because that's not before you tonight. Approval of the subdivision will not affect the status of any road, and it will not cut off access to any of the neighboring properties. No one has legal access to their properties through Mr. LeMans' land. And this issue did not come to Mr. LeMans' attention until after he had submitted his subdivision application, and the initial plat was being prepared and provided to the county. In preparing the initial plat, the research for any easements and encumbrances on the property did not show any evidence that there was, at that time, a publicly dedicated route through his property. It was discovered later, I think, by the Planning and Zoning Office. So at this point, the legal status of the road is not determined, and it's currently under review. And no decision to vacate the road has been made, and no steps have been taken to do so. And I want to reiterate again, because I think it's important too, that no one's access will be impaired if the subdivision is approved this evening. Every adjacent property owner will have the same rights that they do now, or if they don't have access rights, that will remain the same whether this is approved or not. What is before you this evening is the final plat for his subdivision, and Mr. LeMans has met all the criteria for approval. The subdivision is consistent with the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. It's in conformance with the 2013 subdivision regulations, and it is compatible with the surrounding area. The Jackson Canyon Road is now shown on the plat, as was required by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The subdivision has received a non-adverse recommendation from the DEQ for the proposed onsite sewer system and onsite wells. The condition required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that a note on the plat state that the septic systems must be designed by a licensed professional engineer, has been met. With respect to the wells, the approximate location of those wells that were previously permitted and constructed has been placed on the plat, and every well constructed has been permitted by the State Engineers' Office, and every well that's constructed in the future will receive a permit from the State Engineers' Office before it is constructed. The State Engineers' Office Letter of March 2, 2020, contains no objection to the proposed There's been a lot of discussion about fire safety. Unfortunately, I think the Casper Mountain Fire District's letter did not take into account the information that we tried to provide concerning the concerns that they have. The road width is twenty feet. There will be a minimum height clearance of fourteen feet that will be maintained. The turnouts, either in the form of driveways of adequate size or specially-designed turnouts, whatever is determined to be the best option, will be constructed. And the turnaround at the end of the proposed road has a radius of fifty feet. So we've tried to meet all the concerns of the Fire District. And Mr. LeMans, as he indicated, is also willing to create a secondary easement for fire and emergency use for the subdivision. What he just indicated to me on this drawing, if, I don't know if I can show you, it would be... Another item I'd like to bring up, the Planning and Zoning Commission did require that Mr. LeMans create an improvement and service district for the subdivision, for the maintenance of the subdivision road. We would ask that you permit Mr. LeMans to form a homeowners association instead. The county, I did some looking, has not required an ISD for at least seven of the major subdivisions that have been approved within the last two years. And for two of those subdivisions, the staff reports specifically include in the proposed findings that the roads were to be maintained by the landowners, and that was a basis for not imposing the ISD requirement. So we would ask for the same treatment and ask that that not be a requirement of Mr. LeMans' subdivision. And then, with respect to the private roads, while I do acknowledge that the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan does call for all subdivision roads to be dedicated to the public, that is not a requirement of the subdivision regulations, which has the force and effect of law. The planning document does not. And so, Mr. LeMans has indicated that he would like private roads. It's not a through street. There would be no need, and since the landowners will be maintaining that road, it doesn't seem necessary to have it open to the public. Additionally, Mr. LeMans has agreed to dedicate that portion of K-2 Road that goes through Lot Seven of the subdivision to the public on the plat as well, down at the corner there. I think that there will likely be some discussion tonight and suggestion that this should be remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration. I don't think that's necessary. I think you have all the information that you need here tonight to make a decision. If you find that there's further conditions that need to be added to this, you can do that this evening and make that a condition for approval of the subdivision. So we're asking you to approve this subdivision this evening. Mr. LeMans has worked very hard and diligently on the project. A great deal of time and expense and effort has been expended on this project, and additional delay is not warranted. And there's nothing hidden, there isn't a hidden agenda, and for anyone to say otherwise, it's just, without any proof, is irresponsible. His vision for the project is a beautiful and desirable neighborhood, and it will be an asset to the mountain and to the county as well. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Questions for Ms. Duncan Malone? Commissioner Hendry?
Thanks for coming in tonight. The other access that your client had talked about, could you be more specific about where that is? Is it between Lot Three and Four, or Four and Five?
Let me look here. It looks to me that it would go through, perhaps Six and Five.
So the main thing I was wondering about is that you've got Jackson Canyon Road through there, through all of those lots, three of them. So if you could go down his road and then come out between Three and Four, it would somewhat similar to what the Jackson Canyon Road was, and it would still provide that two accesses.
So grant a right-of-way from Thetford Road along the lot line of Three and Four is what you're suggesting?
Right. I mean, that's a possibility. We'd have to look into that and see if that would work, but it's a possibility.
Okay. I think he's amenable to looking at different possibilities.
Okay.
Other questions? I guess, this is the one, I'm boiling this down to lots Three, Four, and Five have Jackson Canyon Road running through it. And while we're not talking about vacating it, the fact that where it lies makes the value of those parcels significantly less, and yet, the public has used them, so I'm trying to come to some type of understanding of either, will a secondary access through here be allowed for public use, whether, even if it comes over and meets part of the private road? And it sounds like this is almost extensively used in the wintertime, not in the summertime. So I think if we can come to some resolution on that, a lot of the concerns would probably go away. And I understand what the applicant is trying to do, but with that road, I mean, literally, Lot Five, it comes all the way, all the way down into the bottom of it, and it makes a lot of that lot very undesirable. So the notion that we're not going to have a discussion at some point in the future, a vacation of that, seems not to be, it's not reasonable that we're not going to have that discussion. So I guess what I'd be asking of the applicant is, how can we create a public access that is amenable to the owner of the subdivision, that allows the owner to try and capture what they're trying to do, and yet, at the same time, allow that public access between what is really Archery Road and K-2 Road? So, just a thought.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other ones? Any other individuals wish to speak in favor? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Amy Gerlach. I live at 502 East Magnolia in Casper, which is also a county road, by the way. I'm a friend of Camille's, and I spend a lot of time on the mountain, in the area of where the subdivision is. I've got to get my notes ready so I don't forget anything. First of all, I'd like to talk about Mr. LeMans. He's an energetic and intelligent entrepreneur. He's a longtime resident of the mountain and has a real heart for the mountain and his neighbors, and just his community in general. I want to offer an overview of what he has done in the process of developing this subdivision. He's been meticulous in regard to the details that everybody has required him to be meticulous about. He's mindful of the environment, his neighbors, and the people that live all over the mountain. He has been extremely sensitive to the rules and guidelines that the county has required, that the state has required, and that the mountain has required. He's willing to be flexible and adapt to the needs of the community and the authorities in the land. Just to address the question that came up when Heather was up here, Mr. LeMans is willing to work with the authorities, and I think that that's very important through this entire process, to know that he doesn't have a set agenda. He wants to do it right. He wants to do it by the book, and he wants to have a happy neighborhood. So he is not intentionally trying to hinder or damage anybody's quality of life on the mountain. Second, I want to briefly talk about some of the opposition. It seems like we're going to go that way tonight. There's a lot of critics here tonight. I've followed on Facebook, but I don't engage on Facebook. You will likely hear from a person tonight, or maybe several, that claim to have lost access to their property because of this subdivision proposal, and that is absolutely not true. Access for anybody has not changed from the beginning of the process until now, and I can vouch for Mr. LeMans that he will not ever block anybody from their property. He's not that kind of person, and he just wouldn't do it. A few here will say that he illegally posted no trespassing signs on his property, that he put up a fence or a rope. First of all, it's not illegal to do that. He does have private property there, and he has an obligation to protect it. This came after some problems that he had with people going onto the property, and I've personally seen the damage done by some four-wheel vehicles that were taken onto the property, and they just destroyed a meadow on that land. And that was two years ago. He then posted no trespassing, and it was in an effort to protect the environment and protect himself from the liability of having people use his backyard as a playground. There will likely be a few people who say Mr. LeMans wants to vacate a well-used road, and I'm referring to Johnson County Road, the 1933 road that meanders kind of all the way through the property. Mr. LeMans never proposed to vacate that road. That was brought up at the Planning and Zoning meeting by the county planner to vacate that road, and there's a reason why it should be vacated. And the recommendation came because really, it's not what you would call a road. We're going to call it a road, and I'm sure that everybody will always call it a road, but it is difficult to even distinguish a trail where that road goes through. I've personally seen it, and in many areas, it's not even identifiable as a trail. There's fallen trees, there's overgrowth. You might be able to say, well, I think there might have been a trail that went there at some point. If you wanted to drive a vehicle on that road, there would be some work to do first. You can't drive on it. That Johnson County Road is not what any of us would consider a road. Another question was asked about wells and septic systems, and I think Ms. Malone, Malone covered that pretty much. My point is that Mr. LeMans has been mindful of the rules. He's complied with every requirement that the county had, the state had, the mountain agreements have put on him. He's fulfilled all the original guidelines of his subdivision application, but he's also taken those five amendments and fulfilled them as well. And he did respond to that, the fire department's questions. I was personally involved with helping him get his words together for that, and I know that it was sent to them. So he did address all of the five amendments that the Planning and Zoning asked him to. There may be more questions and hurdles when it comes time for planning the roads within the subdivision, and I have no doubt that he will do this with integrity and as much care for the environment and the community that he can. For the purposes set forth for tonight's meeting, though, I don't think that there's any reason not to approve the subdivision, knowing that he will go forward with the same integrity that he has carried throughout. He will work with the county on roads and the fire department on roads, and whatever he needs to do to make everybody happy and comply with the safety regulations for the mountain.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gerlach? I just have one quick one, just clarifying. You kept referencing Johnson County Road, or are you talking?
I'm sorry, Jackson Canyon.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. I don't see another one on there.
I used to live in Johnson County, so it just comes out that way. Sorry.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
Jackson Canyon Road.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you. If you're wishing to speak in favor, go ahead and come up until I see nobody stand up, and then I'll ask for opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is John Kornquinn, K-O-R-N-K-V-E-N. I'm at 1650 South Walnut Street is where I reside, and I am a neighbor within a quarter-mile. I'm a landowner up there. I want to appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Mr. LeMans has done a great job as a developer. I'm a real estate agent. I sell a lot of mountain properties. Our office kind of focuses on Casper Mountain. We sell a lot, and we see a good project, and I can tell you, this is a good project. It's good for the community of landowners, because he is expanding, he's bringing water to his lots. He has drilled wells. That's an area that... That's an area that you can get water. It's a good spot for homes that want to be year-round or just cabin sites, because there's water, there's electricity. If you see any of his work up on the mountain, he does quality work. He doesn't slip-shot anything from his home to other properties he has up there. He's been a just upright guy in that situation. So, I would really strongly ask you to accept this subdivision. If there's modifications, we understand that, but as a project—from a real estate professional, I can say it's a good project for the increasing demand on the Casper Mountain for people that are looking for properties. It isn't something down in a canyon. It's not something that's just wrongly built. He's doing a good work, and I just suggest that—and hope that you will approve this.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Corpin?
Cornquinn.
Cornquinn, okay. With a name like mine, I always appreciate somebody trying to get the name right. All right, no questions. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners and staff, my name is Gary Lever. I'm at 101 East Second Street in Casper. I am an adjacent property owner. I own the property directly south of Lot 7, Thetford Number 2. Couple of things that were mentioned. Commissioner Mil—is it Milner-Money?
No.
Sorry. Mil—you had asked about in-and-out access. At this moment, when he builds the road on Lot 7, that will provide one access into the subdivision. Also, there is a 60-foot easement for a road coming in—comes in just south of the Judith Reed subdivision. That is now the location of Jackson Canyon Road that enters the subdivision. So, the issue of two accesses shouldn't be an issue. There are two accesses. There is also access through Thetford Number 2. It's not an easement, but there's a road through there that then connects to the BLM property on the southwest of that subdivision that ultimately connects up to Archery Range Road. So, there are a number of different—two trackers and different roads that emergency vehicles could use in the event of fires or in the event that somebody had any health issues in that area. I think the subdivision—again, I agree with Mr. Cornquinn—that it's a well-done subdivision. There is a need and a demand for nice lots on Casper Mountain that have access to power and water. I also have drilled some wells up in that area. You may hear some people talk about water and the lack of water flowing to Garden Creek. State of Wyoming controls whether or not they permit water in any location. I don't think that there's any size regulation that the county has that says you've got to have X amount of acres to actually drill a well. I think the subdivision is well-planned. I think that it is going to make a great location for the demand that we are hearing from not only people in Casper, but people from other states that are really looking at Casper and looking at some areas that have water, electricity. Casper Mountain is gorgeous. It's beautiful. The subdivision will do nothing but enhance the usability of Casper Mountain, and I think it'll bring some great people and some nice houses to the area on Casper Mountain. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lever? All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Bryson with JKC Engineering. Our address is 111 West Second Street. We prepared the plat and engineering study for the subdivision, and as you've heard several times now, it's been through DEQ. They did give us approval, more or less, to proceed. Just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify that seemed to come up, and everybody has a different take on it. The Jackson Canyon Road that traverses this parcel, to date, I have not found nor received an easement dedication for that, so I don't know where everybody's getting their idea that this is a dedicated easement. It's mapped, it's existed, it's been used, but for this specific portion, I have not seen a dedication for that. So, I am mistaken. The other thing I wanted to address is the secondary emergency access that Camille has discussed, and that would be between Lots 3 and 4, or approximately. We have to get up there when the snow melts and see what is actually feasible.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Any questions?
So, are you talking about right on that property line?
Yeah.
Right where it comes down onto the Archery Range Road?
Right.
Is that where you're looking at?
There's a bit of a draw there at that corner on Archery Range, so, you know, for a safety standpoint, we may have to divert slightly at the end there.
Yes, and we're good to come out in a draw.
No. Yeah, and it's a bit of a corner, too, so just trying to do something safe.
Okay. No further questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to PS 20-1 to approach the lecturer.
Katie Legeski, 9550 K-2 Road. At this time, I am connected to his property at about 50 feet of the 60-foot easement at the current operational road. On his plat, according to the 1933 and 1938, that is not Jackson Canyon Road. I sent you a map that I drew. It's color-coded. Jackson Canyon Road comes up through the unplatted off of K-2, splits that straight in half, comes up through—I believe it's Lot 6, meanders through 5, 4, 3, and comes out south of the road that is in his plat, according to the 1933 and 1938 easement—perpetual easement records. So, it affects four lots instead of three. The road that is platted there is an operational road. It currently has a 60-foot easement that goes through one of his lots. It's a road easement, as well as electric and utility easement. If that makes any sense. This is a very confusing subdivision, and with all the different issues. I am not against subdividing. His plans are good plans. I see the advantages, but I also see the disadvantages. We have a road that goes through there, it's shown, that is used summer, winter, spring, and fall, not only by residents, by people who run that route years ago. It was part of the dog sled route. So, that was always used. It's dedicated to the public partway through his, according to an easement. You got my record on that, I believe. I sent it. Roads are a vital part of infrastructure. You can't separate the major and confusing road issue from this subdivision. There are two separate roads within this subdivision. First is the Jackson Canyon Road with perpetual easement, and the other is the operational road with partial easement as well as utility easement. The way this subdivision has been presented has caused much confusion as to what road anyone is really talking about. For years, I thought it was called Kilmer Road, because it shows on one map Kilmer Road. On another, it's Archery Range. But according to the assessor, it's just a road with nothing. This road goes from K-2 to Archery Range Road. It is used by our fire department to access the west side of the mountain. Zoning and planning failed in explaining the roads that go through this property, as well as the developer, who may not have this information. There are two very good examples of this issue and the results of delaying the road issue. One is Beverly and Fourth Street in town, and the other is Blackmore Road. In both of these cases, houses had to be moved at great expense to the city. The Beverly Street affected my family directly. My great uncle was one of the people that were forced to leave his home of over 50 years and move at the age of 75 to a new home. Ironically, this could have been prevented. When the subdivision that was going in was presented, they said, "We'll deal with the roads later. That's not a concern." It cost the city over $1 million just at Beverly and Fourth to move the houses and rebuild the roads. But it's not going to cast the county to rebuild these roads within the subdivision or the subdivision attached to it. It'll be the homeowners, and it'll be the developer. The zoning and planning committee is failing the Casper Mountain residents by not looking at all the issues within this subdivision, not physically going up and seeing for the cells what really is up there. Jackson Canyon Road is a trail. It's got trees growing through it. You can't walk or drive it unless you want to ruin your car. On paper, this is beautiful, but when it's executed, it has flaws. I use the example of NCHS. On paper, those plans for the new building where the gym is located are beautiful. They didn't put sewer in the plans, so they built the building and had no sewer for toilets. They had to tear it out and redo it. There's icing, there's flooding, there's roof leaking, and the list goes on. Costing Natrona County School District thousands of dollars to fix what could have been prevented. I don't know if any of you are aware of what's happening in California after all the devastating fires over the past few years. The communities that burnt to the ground were composed of dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, and gated communities, making it next to impossible for firefighters to defend their property because there was no safe ingress and egress. And if you look at ingress, it's a drive-through, one way in, one way out. You can go either way. Laws are being changed because of this, including insurance laws, which may prevent subdivisions on Casper Mountain from being able to even get insurance. My road may be dead-ended. Is he going to dead-end it at his property line when he builds his new road? These are questions that need to be addressed before approving and solved before approving. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Legerski?
Legeski.
Legeski, I apologize.
I've got a worse name than yours.
I have one quick one. So, where is your—relative to the lots?
I am right here.
Okay. All right. So, how do you normally access your property right now?
I come in off of K-2.
Okay, and then come up? Is there a road that you come up, or are you coming in from the east of this property?
Go back to that, Trish, if you want to go back to that.
Do you have the aerial?
Aerial might work.
There you go. That gives a better idea.
Okay, you're coming in from basically the triangle?
This is K-2.
Right.
I turn right here.
Okay.
This is my property.
Okay.
And then for emergency—for my egress, I can go out this way.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
On the map, that shows us Jackson Canyon Road.
Correct, on his platted map, it does show Jackson Canyon, but that is not Jackson Canyon.
Okay.
See why so many people are very confused? Because we're talking about two different roads.
Could you—what you're thinking, Jackson Canyon Road, could you point that out on that, please?
Jackson Canyon legally comes up through this little corner of the map, comes up around here. You can see a little pass that comes through here, makes all kinds of little curves and turns, and comes out approximately just a little further this way.
So, is it like a four-wheeler trail or a Jeep trail, or—
If you want to risk death, yes, it is, because there's trees growing in the middle of it.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Good evening, Mr. Lamont.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Mr. Batolio.
You didn't bring your voluminous books.
No, I'm sorry to overwhelm you with so many emails, but, you know, I'm not a guy that's against subdivisions at all.
Tracy, would you go ahead?
Oh, Tracy Lamont, 9855 Crimson Dawn Road. You know, Camille's done a good job of putting this together, but it boils down to public versus private roads is really what it boils down to. Trish, can you bring that back up again, please? And then, you know, the Jackson Canyon County Road isn't going to go away as an issue because it's closed further to the west on Regal Road. It was closed by a landowner that's blocked off access to the entire west end of the mountain via the top of the mountain, and it's locked in thousands of acres of state and BLM land and private land, too, as well. So, the easements are there. I sent you a copy of the map that gives you all the meets and bounds. I've copied that to all of you, including Eric. So, the road is there. The right-of-way has already been established. So, when you look at the plot here—or the plat, what needs to be done first and foremost, the county needs to get up there and survey where the roadway is in conjunction to all the confusion here on it. And, you know, that's the first thing that should have been done when it was identified that that road went through there, and the planning department's known about the Jackson Canyon County Road for over two years now, from when the dugout shut it down on Regal Road. So, that information's been in the planning department. I don't know if that closure was ever called to your attention, but it sure as heck has been now. So, we're talking about public easements, public roads, and so forth. So, I'm going to read you here of pertinent significance is, many folks that reside on the west end of the mountain at Snowmobile had for years and years used the now-closed segment of Jackson Canyon County Road, which turns out to be the functional road that Katie was just describing. But for recreational purposes, to travel back and forth to not only Bear Trout Meadow, but to other Casper and muddy mountain areas that lie either south or east of K-2 Road. There is another— There is another alternative trail to the south, but it lies totally on private property and subject to possible closure one day as well. That's owned by Mr. Lever that was up here and he, he might be able to attest to that. But if the southern route was ever shut off coupled with potential abandonment on it of the segment of Jackson County, County Road that lies within the proposed subdivision, Snowmobile access from Bear Trout Meadow to the west side and, and Archery Range areas of the mountain would already be killed for not only the western residents, but for general public use as well. Reason I point that out, that roadway's been used for public use and the county used to groom that before the state took over the program. And that was prior to be moved south on the parcel that Mr. Lever's ended up with now on it. But this was all prior to, to Mr. Lehman's, you know, coming to the mountain. We're going back to the 1980s here roughly. So we've established use, but here's the primary thing that's triggered all of this. And rumors are bounding that a conceptual gated private subdivision atop Casper Mountain located in the K2 Tower and Camp Wyoming areas is in the preliminary stages of allegedly being pitched to the county planning department. I said rumors here, okay, but they're floating and I didn't start them. This conceptual subdivision is said to be made up of 180 acres or possibly more at present. It has been said that the concept includes shutting down public use of select segments of K2 Road, Cricket Pine Trail, and Hummingbird Trail. They're all roads, all of which run through the vast acreage of the Van Horn family properties. All three roads have been used since the 1980s as a primary groomed public Snowmobile use, uh, trail, trails. Closure to said road segments would not only kill Snowmobile trail use, but also all other types of public use as well. When this was learned about, that's what got everybody excited and why they're here tonight on them. So, that leads you back to the private road discussion. And there's also another issue that both ends of what theoretically is Jackson County, County Road have been sealed off, have been barricaded and shut off any public use of that road right-of-way. So first and foremost, it brings us back to, we need to survey what's what up there? What belongs to the county on it? So, anyway you slice it, there's a public road right-of-way, it runs right through the center of that that needs to be maintained, you know, it needs not go away. And there is a solution to that that I pointed out to all of you and I'm not going to go through that, you know, I've, I've broadened that up to you time after time, but it's, just basically, you can realign the public road right-of-way as a public subdivision road, run it right down where, uh, Mr. Lehman has his proposed private road until it connects to lots three and four. And Rob asked the question, and it can go right down the, the center line between lots three and four and connect to Archery Range Road. That's a win-win for everybody. It'd be a public road on it. If it's a private road, not a good thing. So if you condone that being a private road and not mandating that it go on out to replace Jackson Canyon County Road right-of-ways, then you're setting a precedent that ties back to this rumored subdivision and with, that brings you to the fact that we're at that point in time going backwards to what the Casper Mountain Land Plan was all about. And that was adopted as a plan, not recommendation, but as a plan. And there are policies in that plan that were adopted by the 2004 P O C C. So, you know, it's important, and I'm going to read 21 or 12 points of contention that need to be met that haven't been met in the subdivision application. And I'll move to that. Um, but one other point is, uh, the road has been closed, whatever road it is, on both ends. I'm told that was done by Mr. Lehman. So that sealed off the public use of that through his property on him. So if that turns out to be on any part of the Jackson Canyon County Road right-of-way, then y'all have an obligation here to mandate that those barricades be removed. Um, so until we get a survey to figure out where, what's what, you know, it's, uh, there's no way this subdivision proposal can move forward. There's too much confusion here. Okay, as per the Casper Mountain Land Plan policies, that's policies, that'd be the same as a regulation. Number one, new subdivisions, roads will be dedicated for public access. Number two, all subdivision roads will be publicly dedicated and privately maintained. Number three, to the extent possible, property shall have an alternate access route, fire trail or two-track, in addition to the primary access road or driveway. Lot of good people put a lot of time into developing the Casper Mountain Land Plan. And the thing that came to the front, uh, right-of-way first and foremost was road accesses to eliminate the gridlock of private roadways up there. And from the point this plan was ad, adopted in 1998 originally, that was the reason for that, to dedicate roads in the future to the public so we didn't continue to create access issues. So we're completely disregarding that when we're looking at the proposal of the Mountain Home, uh, or Mountain Acres subdivision. But finding a fact, Mountain Acre, uh, Mountain Acres, one and only proposed private dead-end subdivision road does not meet or conform to any of the above B O C C adopted 2004 Casper Mountain Land Plan policies. As per the subdivision regulations of Natrona County, that was 2013, is the one I'm working off of, and it has a handful of amendments over time, uh, made to it up to, I think, through 2018. Number one, enforcement policies, no construction shall be gone, in honor, or improvements made upon land for which a plat is required by these regulations unless and until the requirements of this resolution have been compiled with other arrangements made. Finding a fact, prior to the approval of the subdivision plan by the B O C C, wells have been drilled. Also, well is located, you can see it plowed plainly here, in lot number two on it, but, uh, let me get back on focus here. On, in lot, located lot two, the drilling of the wells prior to the B O C C approval appears to be a clear violation of enforcement penalties. Number two, minimum application requirements for major subdivision. Documentation satisfactory to the Board of County Commissioners that adequate access has been provided in all proposed streets, alleys, and roadways within the subdivision conform to minimum standards adopt, adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Finding a fact, the proposed private dead-end roadway within the subdivision does not conform to all minimum standards adopted by the Board of County Commissioners relative to both the Casper Mountain Land Plan policies and subdivision regulations in Natrona County. Number three, road and access. The applicant may be required to develop and dedicate a public road or easement if the road would be in a logical extension of an existing public road. That goes back to the survey. There's been a road through there that the public has used for years until it was shut down. A second legal access will be required with a major subdivision of lots or more, or six lots or more unless an exception is granted by the Board of County Commissioners. There's, there's your hammer right there. Says a second access will be required with a major subdivision of six lots or more unless an exception is granted. Um, so, you know, the ball's in your court on that one. Roads and access. The applicant may be required to develop and dedicate to the public a road or easement if the pub, road would be in logical extension. Oh, I just read that one, excuse me. Land may be required to be preserved by the property owner for possible future extension of a public road. And you are the ones that would determine if land would be required, uh, to preserve, uh, for future, uh, extension of a public road. That's all the more reason, that, that reason that, that's in there is if somebody else comes in to put a subdivision behind it, the roads are already there and the easements have already been provided for. Finding a fact, the applicant hasn't been required to dedicate his proposed dead-end road to the public as the location of the, uh, road proposed is a logical extension of a public road. Furthermore, the proposed major subdivision consists of six lots or more, thus a second legal access is to be required. Extension, or exceptions can only be granted by the B O C C and the planning department. Lastly, no land has been preserved, uh, by the property owner for possible future extension of a public roadway. Why did the planning commission approve these exceptions prior to the B O C C given any such consideration to the set exceptions? I'm about done here, it's getting redundant. This would be number four, planning considerations. Land area for future road right-of-ways shall be reserved and located according to good planning practices and principles in the county developmental plan and shall be labeled as such. Finding a fact, no land for future road right-of-ways has been reserved and located and labeled as such. This does not comply with the subdivision regulations of Natrona County as per good planning, uh, practices and principles and the county developmental plan. Number five, general design criteria. A single lot shall not be divided by a road, alley, or other lot. Finding a fact, lots three, four, and five are split by Jackson County Road, Jackson Canyon County Road. This does not comply with the subdivision regulations of Natrona County. Number six, preliminary, or processing of, uh, preliminary plat application. When any road will intersect with a county road, which it does in four places, an approved and signed copy of this, of the county road access permit shall be submitted. That wasn't done. Finding a fact, Jackson County Road crosses lots five and six and more. This requirement appears not to have been met. Number seven, processing of preliminary plat application. When a subderusing road or easement must cross public property, a copy of appropriate red, road dedication, easement, or equivalent document shall be submitted. Finding a fact, Jackson County Road crosses lots five and six. This requirement appears not to have been met. Last but not least, I've got two more. Number eight, application instructions. When any road will intersect with a county road, an approved and signed copy of the, uh, county road access permit shall be submitted. Finding a fact, Jackson County Road crosses lots five and six. This requirement appears not to have been met. Number nine, application instructions. When a subdivision road or easement must cross public property, a copy of appropriate road dedication, easement, or equivalent shall be submitted. Finding a fact, Jackson County, or Canyon County Road crosses lots five and six. This requirement appears not to have been met. So, I pretty well covered all the bases.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lamont? All right, thank you, Tracy. Mr. Lamont?
I appreciate you giving me the time.
The Honorable Judge Huber?
Not honorable.
Not anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, I'm here just strictly to speak. I'm privileged to own, uh, my, what was my grandparents' property, which be, would be roughly over there at about the edge of the curtains and the woodwork there across Micro Road. Uh, and I'm not, uh, here to speak, I, I'm always a little bit confused in these deals because you say, well, you want to speak in favor, you want to speak opposed. I'm not speaking either in favor of or, you know, opposition to this, but I do have a couple of comments that I want to make. Uh, you know, like, a little bit by way of background, my dad was a civil engineer, was county surveyor for a good many years, was a city engineer for a long time. One of his real passions was always the idea of two ways in and out of any subdivision. Now, uh, you can look around, not only on Casper Mountain, but all around the county and in some places in the city, and a lot, in a lot of instances, that's a rule that was only honored in the breach. And, uh, to, and then a lot worse than what this could ever be. Uh, you know, a lot of the subdivisions are real, you know, frankly, real safety death traps if you look at them that way. And, uh, and so I'm, I'm really concerned about that. I am also concerned, you know, it's, it's interesting because this Jackson Canyon Road, uh, I was commenting to Chief Evers back there that that brought back memories of going up to our, my parents' and grandparents' cabin up there, you know, riding in the 48 Chrysler and then the, the 55 Pontiac going in that way, you know, to get into the, uh, our property. Uh, because then after the Hogdon Road and, uh, uh, Micro Road was put in, that's when that road really was kind of, you know, for a lot of intents and purposes abandoned, you know, because it was quicker and easier to go in the other way. And, uh, but I am troubled by the fact that that cuts through Mr. Lehman's property the way that it does, because, you know, let's face it, he owns a valuable piece of property there and he's got a right to develop that and it should be developed in a way that provides him with a decent, uh, return, but also in a way so that it does something nice for the neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, I really have a question in my mind whether that road, however it meanders through those lots, is a good idea that way, you know, for the value of his property, for the value of the neighborhood and all those kind of things. It sure seems to me that if the topography would, uh, allow it, that coming down one of those lot lines with, uh, you know, a different defined, uh, uh, right-of-way might be a better way for everybody to be doing that. And, uh, and so I would, uh, just respectfully urge that you kind of take a look at that if you can do that without doing too much violence, uh, because like I say, he owns, he owns a piece of property there that he's got a right to, uh, to subdivide and do something with. I also, you know, as I sat here and I looked at this, I remember one of, uh, Governor and then Senator Cliff Hanson's famous quotes, he liked to say that environmentalists were somebody that built their cabin in the mountains last year. And, uh, I, I think you have to kind of, you know, I'm not sure I share his skepticism of those things, but you do have to kind of look at this as you're looking at these, approving these, you know, kind of plats and subdivisions is, uh, you know, and, and opposition and who's in favor of and, and all that stuff, you know, you really have to look at what's reasonable and everything. And, uh, you know, Camille's got a real good piece of property there that, that, you know, he, he deserves to be able to, uh, develop. The thing, when Tracy was talking about that Jackson Canyon Road being blocked off on ends, the, I'm not sure if everybody was really clear on that where that's blocked off is clear over by the fire station and then, uh, you know, farther out, uh, to the east is where that road was kind of orphaned. But when those property owners blocked that off, I don't, on the east end, I don't think there was a real concern about it because you could easily come in on K2 Tower Road and come in there that way. And, uh, whether if that, uh, right-of-way was defined then or not, I don't know. But, uh, you know, that's, that's how far, it's not like somebody just threw up a fence, you know, a couple hundred yards away from this. And, uh, I didn't know if that made any difference or was clear to you guys, but, uh, you know, I, I'm really certain that you guys will come to a, a resolution here that will allow him to, uh, develop his property in a way that's going to be an asset to the area up there and not do great violence to, uh, you know, to the values of anything. I'd be happy to answer any questions or anything if you've got any.
Any questions for Mr. Huber? Oh, before you go, could we get your full name and address for the record?
Oh, no, that's.
Otherwise, Ms. Good over there is going to throw something at me.
Yeah, Mike Huber and I live on South Poplar downtown here. I would just say that speaking to you, not with reference to this project, but in general, I think that the county really needs to strengthen its subdivision rules about the two ways in and two ways out, not only on small subdivisions like this, but especially on big ones. Because I look at ones like Elkhorn Creek, uh, the Aspens up on Casper Mountain, those people are just trapped in there. If there's ever any kind of a problem, there ain't no way out except the way you. out except the way, one way in, one way out, and that is a very, very bad proposition. And so I would separately urge that you look at that part of your subdivision things, but I don't think that you should crucify Mr. Lehman here, you know, on that kind of thing, but.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the County Commissioners. My name is Chief Lisa Evers, I live at 3430 Micro Road. I've actually been a neighbor of Mr. Lamont since 2011, so. My main concerns with it is the safety of the firefighters and of the residents. As Mr. Huber said, there are some places up there that it's not safe to send people into, and that's my main concern, is the safety of my firefighters first and of the residents second. The reason we're worried about, you know, like putting in the pullouts and everything is when things catch fire and they start to go crazy like they did, look at Sheep Herder Hill, you know, you saw smoke and then you saw it coming down through the Gulf towards the country club in under an hour. When that happens, people scatter because they're terrified, but then they have things that they want to get out. We just want to make sure that the traffic is going smoothly, that we're not going to run into the citizens trying to come-go. I'm all for it, as long as we can talk to Mr. Lamont about the easements and stuff, but we weren't notified that this, or we would have done it before snowma getting hit. So we can work with Mr. Lamont on this as well. If he didn't allow subdivisions up there, honestly, I'm in Hogedon Four, so I wouldn't have a home. So, I just, we're worried about the safety of everybody up there and easy access. We have water at Hogedon and we have water at Camp Sacagawea and we use, I have no idea what the road is anymore because I'm so confused right now, but we take all the little bouncy, two-tracky things up around what I always thought was Kilmer to Archery Range to go to Camp Sac or Hogedon to get water and come back in and fight fires on the west side and try to protect the structures that I believe are on Kilmer or whatever the road is now.
Okay.
So, I could answer any questions if anybody has any?
Any questions for the Chief? Commissioner Mill?
Good evening, thanks for coming in. Looking at some of the maps and whatnot up there, and according to the plat, does Klein Road kind of tie into the very top of his property there or not?
I believe so, or I believe it. You can go on it, you can go in towards Klein Drive and Ricky Circle and then bounce up towards either K-2 or Kilmer.
Right, so if he made the road like he's designing but just kept going and tied into Klein Road, would that work as two accesses?
As long as it's wide enough and there's pullouts to get out of people's way, or for them to get out of our way preferably, but I get wanting to flee, so.
Right, is Klein Drive a, Klein Drive's a public designated, right?
Well, not if you ask the people on Klein Drive.
I see a shape behind.
So legally, I'd have known. Is it?
No, last I heard, last I knew it was not.
It's private.
It isn't private.
Well, that's what all the signs say.
It was developed before private and public became a real issue.
That was originally the legal access to Camille's property. So, that northernly road, Klein Road, is legal access into Camille's property. So, there's a thought of policy that proves that, so that was a legal access into Camille's property, it's not private.
Oh, good.
It's, it could be an access for fire and emergency vehicles.
If he just, if he just strung that on out.
Right, yeah, but I mean, we'll go up and look and we can get around and work with Camille. Easy peasy, it was just, like I said, safety. I watched him build the home that he currently resides in and I've kind of been watching the construction of the new one he did. I mean, the mitigation and everything that he put in, he did a lot of work on that. And I know that he respects the mountain and that he takes care of it and everything. I mean, he is a good steward to our mountain. It's just my biggest concern was ingress and egress, preferably two ways, especially as squirrely as fire has been lately, and the safety of my firefighters and my residents on Casper Mountain, who are also my neighbors in that area.
You don't know which way to go with that hump right there, it'd be an on-the-top.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner North?
I guess I was going to go the same direction, but which avenue would you prefer as a secondary access? Would you prefer it to be out on Archery Range Road? I mean, that's obviously a little better, easier access for, for our equipment.
Yeah, that is much easier. I mean, it would be ideal to have it off of Archery Range Road. You know, I get people wanting their privacy, I mean, I am on Micro Road. I sit back maybe fifty, sixty feet, and you do get tired of the lookee-loos that come up lost actually looking for Garden Creek Falls. So, that kind of amuses you, but I mean, I get it, you know, you move up there for the peace and quiet and serenity and the last thing you want is people tearing all over the place, so. But ideally, especially with our mutual aid agreement with all the other people that help us in Natrona County, everybody would understand where Archery Range Road is. And I think that Klein Drive would need some work widening it and informing the landowners down there that it's public, so.
Okay, and what, just for the record, what kind of equipment do you usually utilize when you're, when you're going back and forth for water up there?
We have our tenders, they're, they're pretty big, they hold 1,250 gallons of water. Two of them are still a stick shift, so that takes a little more finesse of moving it around, but that's what we'd send out to get water, that'd fill our brush trucks so that we can remain there and stop the fire hopefully with the water we have in our brush trucks while they run to get more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Kaufman?
Yeah, so just a quick question, thank you for being here tonight. Was there anything else in addition to ingress/egress issues? We just got the paper today, so I just was curious if you had an opportunity to go up or if there were some other things that you wanted to see resolved or concerns?
Mainly, if you look at, I measured on the map, you know, with the little one inch equals however many feet, there would need to be basically six turnout or pulloffs. The cul-de-sac turnaround, whatever, that's perfect because we train every year with forty-five feet and I don't have anybody on the department right now that can't make it in much less than that. You know, so that would have to be the ten feet wide, thirty foot long, but if we walk through the property with Camille, you know, we can look at like, okay. I mean, in the soggy season, or if somebody's dumped a bunch of water, whatever, if we're using the shoulder or the easement, that can get a little squirrely when you're carrying tons of water, and that would be my biggest concern is just going down and physically looking at it. The, I mean, I know there's numerous two-track trails crisscrossing that property because people have just kind of made it their own, which is sad. But Archery Range is easily passable and Kilmer, if I can get a brush truck down it, I wouldn't take anything larger than that down it. And the, so, you know, we'd have to look at the Kilmer, Jackson Canyon Road thing, whatever it is. I just am worried that we need to make a stipulation, if it is approved tonight, that we work on the roads and access to the properties and everything. So, that would be my greatest concern. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you Chief.
Commissioners, my name is Tyler Eickhold, I am, my name is Tyler Eickhold and I am the Assistant Fire Chief for Casper Mountain Fire. In my research over the last couple of weeks, you know, we were just notified of this, and there does seem to be some type of conflict between the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan and the codes that the county has adopted. On December 18th of 2018, Natrona County did adopt the 2018 International Fire Code. In the International Fire Code, there is differences in between the width of the road and the radius of the turnaround. The 2004 Land Use Plan is seventeen years old. It does need to be updated, but at the same time, I do think that the codes that the county has adopted need to be abided as well. There has been many questions answered tonight, listening to Ms. Duncan Malone and Camille on the subdivision, and it does sound like they are willing to, to work with us and provide the best safety possible for our members of the Fire Department and the residents. So I do just want you to take that in consideration, that there definitely needs to be more information or construction of the road for safety of the residents and the members of the Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Just may I interrupt for one second, please? Is there anybody in here for BARNON? Is there anybody in here for BARNON? Okay. Sorry, thanks.
There were quite a few for a while, I think we wore them out. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, my name's Danielle Wilson, I live at 2060 Kingsbury Drive here in Casper. I actually have nothing to do with the roads, I have another question and concern. I don't think this is necessarily a bad idea at all, but my concern is that on Lot Two is the start and headwaters of Garden Creek. So I would like to know more clarification from Mr. Lamont and his site people, how that changes, how his site changes the drainage into Garden Creek. Especially mean for Garden Creek, this is what comes down over the falls and then hits West Forks, Garden Creek at the Bailey Ranch, at the bottom of the mountain. So with having seven wells planned, seven septic systems at the headwaters of Garden Creek, I would like some clarification as to how this actually affects Garden Creek.
Okay. I, I believe the DEQ has answered that in their, in their response in looking at both the water wells as well as the septic systems, but.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions? No? All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening Commissioners, my name's Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane. I spoke at the hearing in front of Planning and Zoning and just wanted to come back again to address you all directly. I was pretty surprised that they moved this ahead, given the number of things that were not correct, and I understand that there were three weeks in between hearings to address some of these things, but as you can see tonight, I don't actually think that the plat has been corrected with the roads. I think there are two roads through there, so confused about whether this plat actually lives up to that. As was stated earlier, I'm not too much in favor or against this, but I do think that consideration needs to be given to the fire safety. Living on the east side of the mountain and having lived through the fire, the Sheep Herder Hill fire, it only takes a minute, and knowing that the Fire Department can traverse through here to get to their water quickly as opposed to going all the way around, not only affords peace of mind, but that's actual real safety. So, when the gusts get up to fifty miles an hour and that fire is ripping through there and they lose access to their water, that means on the east end that I'm directly affected. So, that's, that's my primary safety concern. The secondary concern is really about the process and seeming to have, not have things in order and to be approving the subdivision without the planning review work actually being completed completely, to me is just surprising and it doesn't, in my eyes, reflect well on the county. And if I was the developer, I would be quite cross with the county for letting me spend money and get this far without these things having been addressed. And I certainly am sensitive to the fact that the developer and his friends speak to his character and his desire to conform with the rules and do everything by the book, which would make me, that's why I would be cross if I was sitting where he was sitting today. And I think that, you know, if, if there is an egress out and the Fire Department can get through, then this should go forward. I think that, as Mr. Tracy Lamont said, those rules are pretty clearly outlined in a couple of places, and so maybe we just chalk that up to, it's been a busy season and those got missed in the development review, I'm not sure how you want to handle those. But I do think going forward, you know, we're redoing the zoning right now as a county, and I'm told from Trish that after that, we will be doing, redoing the mountain land use plan. And so I think that appropriate action for this group to take would be to send this back to get the plat correct before you approve it, maybe set it for a date certain in the future, once that work can be done, and then perhaps look at, as was done in 2003, putting a moratorium on future subdevelopments, subdivisions and developments on the mountain until the zoning work can be done, the Casper Land Use Plan can be redone, and then everybody knows what the rules are. We don't have neighbors in conflict because things are ill-defined. What is a campground? What is a road? Was it a private road? What is a county road? And having the records digitized. I also think there are two bills that came through the state legislature this year that are pertaining to tying the hands of counties, cities, and towns on how they can interpret these. So, from a timing standpoint, I don't know if there's a rush to get construction done. I mean, certainly there's a lot of snow up there, but I, I wouldn't necessarily see a problem with taking the time before construction season really perks back up to get those things right, and I would encourage you all then to look at, at, again, implementing a moratorium so that you can get everything corrected as was done seventeen years ago to try and address these and then move forward. Thank you.
No questions, thank you sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Beverly Van Horn, 1037 K-2 Road, and owner of most of the property in that area. And I am in opposition because we were all gathered on that road to a meeting to discuss the access a couple of years ago by Mr. Lever. And at that time, he knew there was a problem because we have, as an entrepreneur, we have spent a lot of money on roads and surveys, everything up through there. Mr. King, the Baptist camp, all the people that are here were at that meeting, and Mr. Lever knew there would be a problem. So if the other gentleman was not informed of that problem ahead of time, I feel bad about it, but they should have informed him. Everybody knew about this. We all sat down and talked about it. We showed him our surveys. And we've had access to that since 1920. Our cabin site at 10137 has been sitting there, the homestead, homestead, for all these years. That road's been through there. Worthington Lenhart has done all the surveys for Hummingbird Hollow, the Baptist camp, Ford's, everybody's through there. That access has always been there. And to not inform the gentleman, I realize he's put up a lot of money, so has everybody else, and then to have our access taken away... put up a lot of money, so has everybody else, and then to have our access taken away because of, I, I learned about this meeting thirty minutes before, so, you know, I'm not prepared, but I do know that they knew about this problem ahead of time. And to go ahead with it, I didn't understand why Mr. Lever had a piece of property that, like, two or three acres is on the other side of the road. You could see it on the map. Why would, with five, five-acre lots stipulated, why would he have this property on the other side of the road? So our, as an entrepreneur, just like him, having put out a lot of money, why would he have been misinformed? And that's kind of what I have to say. All of these people have, have access, let's see, Divorce, they have access up there. Crooked Pine Road cuts right off of there, where a lot of people live in the subdivision for Hummingbird Hollow. And to have that access changed or cut off now to accommodate somebody else that's just coming along, why should our access, as entrepreneurs, be changed? And maybe I don't understand it because I just didn't know about the whole thing. Questions?
Questions for Ms. Van Horn. All right, thank you.
Since Mr. Lever was brought up concerning, I don't think she's understanding that Jackson Canyon Road is not the same as what she's talking about that goes to her property. I have nothing to do with misinforming Mr. Lamond on his subdivision, and what she's talking about has nothing to do with Jackson Canyon Road. Just want to clarify that.
Commissioners. I'm Dr. Sean Ellis. I live in Casper, Wyoming, ten-ten Beaumont. I own several pieces of property that are right in this neighborhood, and I think that you've come to the realization tonight that I, like my good friend Mike Huber, agree that Mr. Camille has a right to develop his property within whatever the rules and the specs that we play there. As a matter of fact, the property that I bought and built a second home on is bought from Mr. Van Horn. Fred Van Horn showed me the property corners in a suit coat and the street shoes, and he knew where everything was up there. We use that K-two access, and so the questions that I have are that somehow you need to figure out and delineate what is acceptable access for everyone in that neighborhood up there. We just, it is confusing as we find out, I'm hearing three different names for the same piece of property that I, and the road that we need to go on, so the county needs to figure that out, so that the maps agree with what's there. The access for my lot past Van Horn's has some other people that you kind of wonder, it's, as a matter of fact, John Cornquinn showed me several properties, and we rejected them because they didn't have good access. And fortunately, we bought this wonderful lot from Mr. Van Horn, and it has great access, but you hear rumors and stories about what may be happening, and that's why I'm here. The county needs to figure it out, they need to protect these access avenues, and then make it well-known that everything is up and above board. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous about this and everything, so I don't know if you guys have any questions for me about this, but I do have property that comes right off the K-two road. My wife and I own several acres there. My son owns property that's right in the parking lot at the K-two tower, and then, as I say, my second home is around in the Hummingbird Hollow subdivision.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ellis? No? Final time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. There being no others to speak for or against, I now declare the public hearing closed for P.S. twenty-dash-one. I don't think there's any outstanding questions, Ms. Malone. Do you? At this point? Okay. All right, Chairman entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to table this issue until we can better establish legal status of the road, potentially have survey work done, and work maybe collaboratively with the public and the property owner to find a solution for ingress egress and public access.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henry.
I would, I would agree with that, and, and there's a lot of questions, and we need to answer, so I would second the motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman.
I believe it's non, non.
Yes, so.
Debatable.
Well, a couple of things. By our, our resolution, without the consent, we can table it to a date certain. If it's going to be tabled indefinitely, it can only be done with the consent of the applicant, so reading that in conjunction with eighteen-five-three-oh-eight, state statute requires that a ruling be made on the application within forty-five days of the commission receiving the planning and zoning recommendation, which I think is forty-five days from today. So the current motion as it stands, I think, is indefinite, and it would be contrary to our, our rules. So I think we would either need to pick a date certain within the next forty-five days, which I think could be, two weeks from now, could be a meeting in May, or if it's the pleasure of the commission to ascertain whether or not the applicant would be willing to do it indefinitely. I might suggest that picking a date certain to table it to would give staff a target date by which to, and legal to, to go through the information we have on these roads and, and to report back might keep us on track to move this along.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be open to a friendly amendment to the motion. Could we get some insight on a reasonable timeline if we were to pick a date? I don't want it to be arbitrary.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, so I think the fourth or the eighteenth, the two regular meeting dates in May, I think would be reasonable. Think that our second meeting in April would be a pretty short, you know, turnaround to, to come back with the type of information that you guys are requesting, but I think, and I'm going to look, but I think we can probably definitely get back to the fourth or the eighteenth.
Mr. Ellis. The, the only thing I'm concerned about is the amount of snow that's up there right now, and if the fire department needs to go in there and take a look at it, I mean, everybody knows what happened last year. We got delayed, and delayed, and delayed, and I'm just afraid if we sit. I agree that we don't want to keep stretching this out, so don't misunderstand that, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we can collect the information that we need in a timely manner and not put anybody in jeopardy of having to rush at the last minute to get things done, because if we get down to the last couple of days and we can't get that information, it just, it just, it just makes it tough on everybody.
Mr. Chairman, so I, Commissioner North, I perfectly understand that, that concern. My only concern is that within the state statute, there has to be a ruling within forty-five days. My hope would be is that we could do it by one of those two dates in May, and, and you would be in a position as a commission to make a, a final decision. Of course, things happen that are unforeseen, and, you know, we'll be in contact, I'm sure, with the applicant quite a bit, and if something like that happens, it'd be my hope that we could work out, you know, the ability to maybe table it again or something like that, just not running afoul of, of state statutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ralph.
I would propose that we shoot for the eighteenth. That gives plenty of time for the fire department, the applicant, to meet up there, whether they go in with the snowshoes or whatever, just look at the maps and pictures. But also, it, it doesn't just, it gives the applicant a deadline. It gives them time. He shouldn't be just sitting out here waiting for us to make a decision. He, he needs to be able to say yes or no, or be able to move forward.
Since we're in discussion, do you have an objection to shooting for the fourth? Because I don't disagree. I want to be really respectful to the property owner as well and move things along, so I, that's, I was going to, in my friendly amendment, propose May fourth.
It's a month. That's thirty days.
That's thirty days. Either way, we, we just need to be mindful of.
I agree. So I'd make an amendment to the motion that would include a date of Tuesday, May fourth.
I'll agree with that.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Kaufman, seconded by Commissioner Henry, to table PSC PS twenty-dash-one until May fourth? Any further comments or discussion? Is there any that is allowed under a table motion? That you know?
I know.
You don't know if there's any restriction? Well, I'm just going to add, I may, whether I'm here or not, who knows at that point, but in looking at this, I think the fire issue is one that's clearly one of our chief obligations is, is to make sure that, that we don't simply just push this and then the, they go to the fire department. I think we lose a little bit of control by, by not doing that at first and making sure we get the roads straightened out. Be nice to know what the roads are. But more importantly, and I, and this kind of goes back to what we've seen at Rotary Park, where you have private property that the public has used, and when it gets a change of ownership and it gets shut off, the public continues to use it. The damage that gets done to the private property continues to, to get worse. As Mr. Lehman has said, he had closed his own property off because it was being damaged. Somehow or another, we have to come up with clear public access roads or recreational trails, whatever, whatever you want to call them, that we don't continue to close off the mountain to the public. There is private property rights here, obviously, and don't disagree with that, but the public has used these roads forever, and to have somebody from out of state come in, I'm not, I'm not demeaning them, but when they come in, the first thing they do is, this is mine, it's not yours, and they lock it up. And we're going to continue to see pressure on this mountain for additional subdivisions, and I think this is a good example of where we need to come up with a standard and a principle that we're going to have going forward, that we are going to have some access, that if it's been there for a while, whether we move it, but allow some public access across some of these larger blocks, so. With that, I'll shut up. Anybody else want to opine?
No, because we don't really have, can't talk about it. But we've done it.
Well, I may, I may be at a graduation, so I want to get that out of the way.
I may not be here. I was like, why?
Well, I may be out of town. Anyway, if there's no, no other comments, others in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Yep, you got public and.
Oh, yes. No, now we have public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to address the commission tonight? And once again, if you'd name, give your name and address, Mr. Lever.
One oh one, East Second Street, Casper. Just to address Beverly Van Horn, there is an issue with KTWO Road and access to property owners further south, and we've discussed with Trish having the county do something about providing access. There's actually way more property owners that have property south on KTWO Road that connects up to Crooked Pine Road, so I would ask that the planning department in the county look at doing something to provide a legal access on KTWO Road so the people that are south of Camille's subdivision have the ability to access their property. Presently, a number of title companies will not ensure right of ingress and egress because of the confusion on KTWO Road going south. So I would like to see someone address that at some point, and I know what Beverly is talking about because there are a number of people who live back there and have cabins back there and don't have the legal right to get to them.
Okay. I think that's, that's a broad issue that it's, runs all the way across the mountain, so.
Tracy Lamont, ninety-eight-fifty-five Crimson Don Road. I, I neglected to point out, there are easements of record of Jackson Canyon County Road running through.
Kleiner Road or Jackson?
There's a bunch of it, and I forwarded that stuff to you guys, so you need to get that to Trish, and then I just, you know, in the best interest of the county and also the general public, the BLCC has a fiduciary duty to, to the public, general public, to mandate that that road be opened back up. And I, I sent this to you guys about three-thirty today, so you've seen that. But I, I'm going to read the logical solution here.
Mr. Lamont, if you'd be brief, we've got a couple other people. I waited all night to talk.
The next logical step for the BLCC to take is to require that the developer relocate the entire length of Jackson County, our Canyon County Road that now runs all the way through the proposed subdivision. The new road route with a fifty-foot right-of-way could be totally relocated as a public road to run along the select Mountain Acre subdivision property boundary lines. We already talked about that. The relocated public road would run all the way between K-two Road and Archery Range Road. Once again, it's a win-win-win situation, and then the, you know, you've already addressed part of this, but without any doubt whatsoever, in order to maintain ongoing, fair, and consistent compliant enforcement of best planning practices, the developer Mountain Acre subdivision must meet all two thousand thirteen subdivision regulations of Natrona County, Wyoming, and Casper Mountain Land Plan policies. Further requirements that need to be mandated by the BLCC are in order that the applicant to, to the Mountain Acre subdivision propose as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to get the record. Thanks for the time.
Quick, before somebody jumps in front. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
So my name is Becky Thorne. I live at eighteen-seventy-two Shumway downtown. I do have mountain property. I'd come tonight to listen to see how much it affected the snowmobile trails. From what I can tell, if any, not a lot. With that, I want to approach some other things that has been on my mind, and many of you know I was in an accident a year and a half ago on Casper Mountain. If you remember that, I was one that wrecked the ATV. So I'm going to read this to you and coming to some thoughts and feelings about some things. So first of all, thank you, county commissioners, for allowing me to speak. First of all, I would like to thank the Parks Department and Board of County Commissioners for the work that has been done in rebuilding Ponarosa Park Shelter. I know I speak from everyone who snowbells or rides an ATV or UTV on Casper Mountain. That is very much appreciated. A year and a half ago, I was in a bad ATV accident on Ponarosa Road. After a tree fell on the county road, I was unable to stop in time. I have been asked numerous times, who was at fault? Was it the landowner who neglected their property and the dead trees, or was it county who was responsible for maintaining the right-of-way on the road, on the side of the road, the county? Where I'm going with this, the reaction of some of the board was to, let's shut the area down. The same area I had spent numerous hours cleaning up the debris from fire, the same area where I painted an outhouse and kept on top of parks to install doors and vaults. area where I painted an outhouse and kept on top of parks to install doors and vaults. With help of the Casper Snow Gypsies and many other volunteers, the bathrooms were rebuilt. County has put up a new shelter. This area still needs work on its deadfall and trees in the area. Along with that, I am, as there is a lot of mountain owners here, I hope you would take from what I'm saying into consideration, because it almost killed me. What does this have to do with going on this new subdivision, as, as I had said, I didn't know how much, if any, it would affect the trail system? Once again, the trail system is at stake, new landowners and others want to shut down the current snowmobile trails. I stand here, I was going to say opposed, but like I said, I was listening to what was going on. I am not happy with how the snowmobiles are treated like ugly stepshals on Casper Mountain. If it was a skiing, skiers warming huts that burned down, they would have been, had new shelters by the beginning of the ski season. Ponderosa took seven years and are pushed by snowmobiles to say enough is enough. When is the board going to look at all user groups? When the ski trails or mountain bike trails are in jeopardy, the board does what it can to help protect to find a solution to it. What is the board going to do to help protect the trail system of the snowmobilers? By the way, the snowmobiles are not used by snowmobiles who pay a yearly registration fee to have it groomed, but by skiers, snowshers, mountain bikes, and fat tire bikes, all who has used these groomed trails without paying a cent to the trail system. It's time for the board to consider the impacts of their decisions and consider all the user groups. I would like to take some time to come up with a solution about pitchpin trail area with the parks and BOC in the near future. As you know, the day that I wrecked was the day we were working on pitchpin trail when the tree fell. What I would like to see is both county parks and the Board of County Commissioners to do something to help, it is a big project to get pitchpin cleaned up. The groomer can't get through there, it's, it's got too much deadfall, it's a constant battle. We need to get people in there rather to cut down the trees that are dead. If you've ever been back there, and I'm disappointed to find how many times I've heard, both boards have not even seen the area. Is it going to take somebody else to die this time before we do something about this? Summer's coming up, spring's coming up, it's the windy season, and I don't want to see this happen to somebody else, because it almost killed me. And for landowners that are here, think about that, I go down pitchpin trail and Ponderosa Trail and all that, and I look to the side of the road and I see all these dead trees standing, that is what almost killed me that day. I want to thank you guys for listening, and I know both Brooke and Dave have been very good supporters of me through all of this, and I do appreciate that, both, the thank yous and Dave being right there for me the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Right, David, Commissioner North?
Ponderosa, the pitchpin trail goes past East End Road to Ponderosa Shelter and around, it goes through a canyon.
Becky, we have discussed getting in there and doing some cuts, I've talked about, about a couple of different times at different places, and that is something that's high on my radar because of liability issues, and we just have to figure out how, when, and where to get that accomplished, so-
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you for bringing it up, though, appreciate it.
Andrew Schneider, eighty-seven-eleven Everett Lane. So, my comments, separate from the subdivision conversation earlier, was whether, is a question, whether there are any other subdivision proposals that have been submitted, and I ask that because Tracy brought up that there are some rumors flying up on the mountain that there have been proposals made, and so just maybe by way of a suggestion, it might be helpful if the county, and I know that, that there are state laws that say you only need to notify adjacent landowners, et cetera, but that you put those up on the website when an application happens, so we don't wind up with people who are just ill-informed or this rumor mill going around that I don't think is really helpful to anyone, and so I don't know if you can answer me in this format, but are there other subdivisions in MR-one or MR-two currently in the pipeline, and are those records public to where I could, I could make a request, and who would I make that request to, to actually daylight those proposals, so people can't, can end the sort of rumor mill about whether they exist?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schneider, there have been no applications received. The rumor mill is the first thing I heard tonight, and I have not had any applications come in. What I would like to say is on our website under the planning department, you can now go and look at the legal notices, as soon as I get an application and I put it out to a legal notice, I have now started adding it to the website, so it's available there for you to see, so once it hits me, it will be posted there. So you can check that planning website for the legal notices.
Wonderful, thank you, and thank you all for everything you do.
John Cornquinn, sixteen-fifty South Walcott, or Walnut, excuse me. Okay, I would like to kind of tag on to this whole issue of, one of the things that would be nice on the Casper Mountain would be more plowing. There's a, I know that Mr. Hagler is bound by his budgets, and I would ask that you guys somehow find, I know in the tough times, some more funds to let him expand his plowing. It's a, it's a tough job to have a budget like he has to do and do all the work he has to do, but I do know that there's some ARPA money coming to the counties, and I would ask that you maybe consider spending some of the money that's coming from the ARPA, the ARP Act, excuse me, that maybe we can use some of that funds to go up to the Casper Mountain and use it for road maintenance, including more plowing. There's a, like I say, there's a big need up on the mountain, there will be more subdivisions proposed, I'll do one myself, and so I, I expect, I would love to see more plowing, thank you. Any questions?
I think so, thank you.
Heather Duncan Malone, one-thirty-nine West Second, Suite One-C, I just have a question, I guess, in order to get the information to you by May fourth, is there anything in addition to the fire safety issue and the secondary access that we should be trying to work on? It wasn't clear to me.
I, I think that the issue of, that there's a, there's been a public access through there, and, and if I were Mr. Lehman, I would not want that access in the form that it is there, because it does devalue the three of the lots, I mean, the way that Jackson Canyon kind of runs down and splits it, and maybe that's not, maybe not, that's not a concern, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with that public access, and whoever buys those parcels may turn around and say, no, no, I'm gonna block it off, and I think we'll be right back here having another bridal trail-type discussion, and it'd be nice if we could get this straightened out before we create another nightmare for us to try and deal with.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that I'll, I'll get in touch with Trish and Planning tomorrow, and we'll be in contact with the applicant, and we'll help facilitate any information exchanges with the fire district that need to happen, and we'll ensure that we address the concerns of the commission by, by the fourth.
Okay.
All right.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
I've heard from a lot of people on our property that the snowmobile trail blocks, that people are actually blocking people from getting into their property, not allowing them to go in because they've got it groomed. Also, the camp, for some reason, the trail, that trail goes through the camp, Baptist Camp, and they have thousands of dollars of repair every year. They go in, and all of their game areas and everything are crushed, they have to rebuild everything. So the trail needs to be literally designated. Our cabin, they come up and there was a drift of snow up to the roof, and they were using that to play on. There's a lot of liability issues here that should not happen, that's all I gotta say.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for the last time? Good. With that, Commissioner North, any comments?
Well, I'm sure everybody down in Cheyenne is glad that the legislative session is about over.
About.
I said about.
Not over yet.
Not over yet, but it's about. I do want to send out some praise to Art Washett, he presented a bill this year for, basically to protect the firearms industry from, basically not being able to get the money that they need from banks and stuff like that. And it's not just about the firearms industry, this is something that is, that is nationwide, that it's about being able to, to run a business the way you want to and what you need to, and having that financial ability to do that, and not having to worry about somebody in the government or somebody in the bank telling you you can't because they don't like what you're doing. I think that's, I think that's very important, it's part of our civil liberties, and that's, that's something that we need to really protect. You know, everybody up here tonight, I don't, none of us are against subdivisions, we just want to make things, make sure things are done correctly, and I think this was a good process tonight, and I think, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and being civil, talking about it, I mean, nobody said anything negative about anybody up here tonight, and that's nice, because that's not the way a lot of public meetings go, and that says a lot for your character, Mr. Lehman, and so that everybody around you isn't against what you're doing, they just want to make sure that, that everything's done accordingly, so, thank you.
Okay. No, 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 no. Commissioner Mill.
By all means.
No, I go last, no, I go last.
He called on you, you're in.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
I think enough oxygen's been used tonight.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Mr. Hendry.
Well, I think Dave had it right, I appreciate everybody coming, and I don't think anybody's against the subdivision, we just want to make sure it's right, and, and this will give us a little time, and I don't think it's gonna cut in on the amount of time that you'll get to, to make this happen, so I, I think it was a good meeting, we, not only this deal, but we've got a lot of other ideas about the mountain, and this meeting brought a lot of that out, and I think that's good for the future, and that's all I have.
Vice Chair Kaufman.
Hey, one other thing. In conjunction with CNFR rodeo, and it is gonna go on, we're talking about having a fly-in, and we've supported that fly-in as a commission, and we'll have a letter for the airport board in support of that. It's gonna be kind of a local, regional airplane fly-in, so they get to come to the airport and have some classes, maybe get their physicals and get the check rides and stuff, so that's gonna happen, and it looks like that last weekend at CNFR, what, eighteenth and nineteenth of June, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, Commissioner Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make it quick, thank you everybody who comes tonight, I always think the best part about being a commissioner is the public process, and it is so much more fun to have a roomful of people than it is two people who usually come on Tuesdays, so thank you for taking the time. I have two quick things, one, I just want to give a high five to our chairman, Paul's been really instrumental, many of you know that we sold Wyoming Medical Center last year, and the proceeds are, I guess, an opportunity for us to do some really good things long term, and by investing those, we'll be able to do neat things in the county in, well into the future, and Paul's been a real advocate for a bill down at the legislature that would allow local government to receive higher returns on their investments, so, again, it would be something that's on the ballot, then goes back to the legislature, but high five to Chairman Bertollio for leading that charge, it only benefits all residents long term, so it's a real win for us if we can get that done. And then the last thing I'll share is, we had a report from Banner Health, or Wyoming Medical Center Foundation today, so we did sell the hospital, this was the first report back to the commission, and it was delightful, they are meeting all the covenants, they're doing it with gusto, and man, we're in a really good spot right now, and I can tell you, going through that process and then coming full circle, it, it's wonderful to see something work so well, so those would be the things I'd have to share today, thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing. We're adjourned.